Welcome everyone to our meeting this evening, our October Regular Board Meeting. Before I call the meeting...
It's August.
Oh, what did I say, July?
October.
I said October. I'm sitting down the road, sorry.
It's okay.
I promise I'm here. So this is August. I just want to be in October. Before I call the meeting to order, there's a couple of things. First of all, we want to acknowledge that Board Member Angela Campbell is not here, and we're wishing her husband well wishes. And Mrs. Jones, is it your birthday? Twenty-four years old, looking great.
I can have one tell me today that I was either 29, 30, or 40. I'll take that.
Hey, I was better, 24. That's even better.
I'll put you in my children's area about that.
But it's great to see everyone here tonight. Super great to see your faces. I'll call this meeting to order. We'll have a pledge of allegiance by Mr. Wyatt, and then we'll have a moment of silence.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Thank you very much. I'll entertain a motion to approve the agenda, please.
I move to approve the agenda as presented.
I'll second.
I have a motion to second, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Item 3.1, approval of July meeting minutes.
I'll move to approve the July meeting minutes as presented.
Second.
I have a motion to second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion passes. 4.1, financials, Ms. Davis.
This is the financials for both fiscal years, because we're in our cumbance period. That's why you see so many vouchers. So this is both payroll and payables, again, for both years. Quite a large sum, because again, we're closing out fiscal year '25 and opening up fiscal year '26, so there's quite a bit of income, vouchers, money in these vouchers.
I move to approve the financial agenda items as presented.
I'll second.
Motion to second, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion passes. Item 5.1, summer employee recognition.
Good evening, Board. Board President Larson, we're going to try something new. I don't know if the school board or district has done something like this before, but every year, we cycle back into the start of a new school year, and everyone's excited. And sometimes, we forget about all the people that get us ready for the new school year. There's a lot of unsung heroes in the district that work through the summer to make sure that classes are ready, facilities are prepared, grounds are prepared, all the stuff that we send out to parents, and all the backend stuff that you really take for granted. And so, we'd like to take tonight, we'd like to recognize several groups of our employees, and just recognize all the hard work that they do over the summer to get us ready for the school year. So I'd like to ask for grace from our employees, because if I read your name and mispronounce it, it's not on purpose, so please give me grace. I also want to, this isn't just about recognizing you as employees, it's about recognizing the sacrifices that you make, the sacrifices that your families make, that your kids make, for the work that you put in over the summer and over the year. And so, it's a great opportunity for us to showcase you, but also understand we're recognizing your families, the sacrifices that you make, because we know that you do make sacrifices. So with that, if it's all right with you, we're going to start with our custodians. I'm going to read your name, and Candy is here to help. We have certificates for you. So when we call your name, please come up, get your certificate. I would ask that you stand in front of the school board, because we're going to take a picture, and then we'll go to the next group, which would be our secretaries. So again, please give me grace as I read your name. And we've checked this list two, three, four different times. If you're here, and I don't read your name, come up, okay? So our custodians, Roy Aguilar, Elijah Alumada, Isubio Arizola, David Cornell, Nathan Cornell, Esteban Correll, Tanner Flake, Sylvia Guyron, Lori Graves, Brett Hardy, Charles Leach, Maria Marquez, David Martenson, Isela Quintana, and Maricela Ramirez. Please come up and get your certificate. We know that it's difficult to get everybody at night when you have lives outside of work, and so we're so thankful for those that you showed up. Can you guys scoot this way? Scoot this way. And, yeah, shoulder to shoulder. Well done.
Thank you all. Thank you guys so much.
Thank you.
Appreciate you.
Thank you.
So our office staff, our secretaries, they do a lot of the ordering and preparing for the new year. So when I call your name, please come up. Kimberly Roseman, Corinne Collins, Tiffany Conrad, Lindy Erveen, Lisa Gerbary, Desiree Holyoke, Amber Jones, Denise McHugh, Brandon Merrill, Amy Ratzlaugh, Kyra Villalba, Misty Whitworth, Desiree Wulpshaw, Diane Young, and Jennifer Golly. And if you have, if husbands, or kids, or anyone else is here, and you want to take pictures, you're welcome to come up as we take pictures, if you would like to do that. Jennifer? Let them come up and take pictures for you. Good job.
Thank you for all you do. You know, without you, we're nothing, so appreciate you.
Thank you.
So next is our maintenance department, and as luck would have it, we are actually having a little bit of a maintenance crisis at the high school, so we have a few people missing. But when I call your name, please come on up. Grant Buckston, Roy Choate, Joe DeGrazia, Nick Dupont, Richard Exley, Matt Jones, Paul Come this way a little bit. Grant, come this way a little bit. There you go. Good job.
Thank you so much. Thank you for all you do.
Next is transportation. Lexi Butel, Kenneth Conrad, Ian Holiday, Cinnamon James, Jordan Reedhead, and Carrie Somerville, please come on up.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You're fine.
Still tolerable, I'm sort of fine.
That's right.
One, two, three.
Thank you, Jennifer.
Thank you, guys. You guys are awesome, thank you.
Next, we would like to recognize our grounds to get to work in the hot sun during the summer, along with maintenance. Peter Escalante, Daniel Garcia, Colton McGinnis, Joe Padilla, and Matthew Schreiber. Please come on down.
One, two, three. Thank you.
Great job.
Thank you, guys.
Great job.
Appreciate you.
Next is technology, which we all take for granted, we all expect it to work all the time, and when it doesn't, we all pull our hair out. And I don't know if any of them are here tonight. Eric Bush, Jennifer McFarland, Maxine Slaybaugh, and Tracy Wagner. Well, we're going to recognize them some other time, but we're glad that... And last but not least, we have a great team in the district office, so when I call your name, please come down. Susan Anderson, Dawn Hatch, Brittany Jones, Courtney Payne, Nicole Pike, Candace Powers, and Katie Reyes. When we were getting these ready, Courtney said, "Do I have to print my own certificate?" Unless you want me to do it, but yes.
Thank you, ladies, for all you do.
You guys are awesome, thank you.
We appreciate you.
Yeah, it's not quiet.
Thank you for being here. Thank you for all that you do. I know you guys, guys and ladies, don't get enough credit. You're behind the scenes, and I just want you to know, and I know the school board, if you have comments, just really appreciate all the hard work that you do to get our school district to where it is. Thank you very much.
Mr. Farnsworth, could we get Grant a different hat?
You came into our meeting in a snowflake hat?
Michigan State, he says.
Is Michigan State, well, that's only marginally better.
Look like it from here.
I would like to say something. I would like to thank you all for being a part of our district, for sticking with us and doing all that you do, not only for our staff, but especially for our students. And we appreciate you, and I hope you know that. We just wish you luck and hope you have a great school year. Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
Anybody else have, Stacy, anything to say?
I echo what Kelly says.
Love you all, appreciate you. Tons. Always know that we're always thinking about you and appreciative of what you do. Okay, 5.2, governing board letter to the community. Dr. Farnsworth?
So, Mr. President, last year...
Hi, everybody. Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks for coming.
You don't have to stay if you don't want to. You have something you want to hear, okay? Well, hang out then.
You don't want to stay, so...
Yep.
Have a nice evening.
Tim, tell Josh I said hi. Hope he's doing well.
Well, that thinned the ranks out, didn't it? That's all right, I'd have left too if I was...
It was worth it.
Okay, do you want me to just read, or you want to...
If you want to give an introduction.
So, this is a letter that we read last year, we've decided to read annually, that, from the school board in the district to the community. Dear Shola Unified School District Community, as partners in the education and well-being of our students, the Shola Unified School District Governing Board is deeply committed to fostering a positive, respectful, and professional environment for everyone within our schools. Our shared goal is to create a supportive atmosphere where students, staff, and families can work together for the success of our children. We recognize that open communication and collaboration between the school and the community are essential. However, it is equally important that all interactions, whether in person, via email, text messages, or over the phone, are conducted with respect and professionalism. Expectations for conduct, professionalism. All communications and interactions with school staff should be courteous, constructive, and focused on solutions. Unprofessional behavior such as disrespectful language, personal attacks, or aggressive conduct is not acceptable. Respect. We expect all members of our school community to treat each other with dignity and respect. This includes refraining from argumentative or confrontational behavior, which can undermine the positive environment we strive to maintain. Zero tolerance for harassment. Harassment of any kind towards school staff, students, or other community members will not be tolerated. This includes any behavior that could be considered intimidating, threatening, or unwelcoming. Athletics. We invite our community while attending athletic events to refrain from vulgar interactions between other fans, coaches, referees, and visiting teams. We are counting on all community members to remain respectful and positive while cheering on our student athletes. Belligerent, distracting, or vulgar behavior is not acceptable. Consequences. Any behavior that is deemed unprofessional, argumentative, or harassing may lead to disciplinary action, which could include restricted access to school property, involvement of law enforcement, or other measures as necessary to protect the integrity of our educational environment. Individuals who disturb the family-friendly environment of our athletic events may be removed and face disciplinary action, which may include being banned from future school events. Staff recourses. To the Shola Unified School District staff, should you ever be the victim of any of the behaviors listed above or be marginalized by a member of the community, please make a report with your immediate supervisor of the incident. Moving forward, you, your supervisor, and the superintendent will work collaboratively in addressing the misconduct. You are a valuable member of this district, and you are not expected to tolerate any misconduct from community members for any reason. We ask for your continued cooperation and commitment to these standards as we work together to create a positive and respectful school community. Our mutual respect and professionalism are vital to ensuring that our schools remain a place where everyone feels welcome, valued, and supported. Thank you for your understanding and partnership in this important matter. Shola Unified School District Governing Board. Item 5.3, first read of model policy update, Mr. Farnsworth.
So every year after the state legislature concludes their legislative session, we get policy updates from the trust, who does our policy. And this is the first reading, there is no action. I have sent this to legal and been communicating with our attorney, Denise Lilbrit, and she says everything's standard, looks good, there's no concerns on the legal side. And so I just want you to be aware of these policies that we'll be bringing next month for formal adoption, unless you have any discussion at this time.
Anybody have anything?
No.
Okay, thank you. Item 5.4, principal reports.
Just want to say, I'm sorry, I just want to say thank you to the principals. The start of the year is always very hectic, and they put in a lot of hours, and so I just want to thank them for putting in their reports and all the great stuff that they've done.
I too want to thank you, because I know this is just like one more thing on top of everything else. So thank you for taking the time and keeping us updated. We appreciate you.
Item 5.5, superintendent report.
Just a couple of highlights. Mr. President, want to thank you for coming to new teacher induction. I think we've got a great crop of teachers, and thank you for saying your remarks. I also want to thank Kelly and Stacy for being to our Welcome Back Assembly and staying throughout, and I hope it was enjoyable for you to see everyone and to hear our speaker. We've had our 100% meeting with the school facilities board and engineers for new HVAC units for Whipple, so it's in the pipeline. We feel encouraged, like this should be funded by the state, but you never know. But we feel like it should be funded for next summer to get all new air conditioning Transportation has done a lot of hard, heavy lifting over the summer, starting a brand-new pilot, if you will, with bus riders having these ID badges that help parents know where they are on their routes, pick up and drop off. We've had some kinks, but I think for the most part, they've been worked out.
Is there an app that the parents...
There's an app the parents can download, and so kids scan the reader when they get on and get off, and they can see the bus route and see where the kids are at all times. So we're excited for that. If you look at the second page of my report for upcoming events, as you can see there, we have the ASBA Law Conference, September 3rd through the 5th. We have Constitution Week coming up, and I know the principals are all communicating with their campuses about that. And so those are some of the highlights from this past month.
Thank you.
Item 6.1, classified resignations, terminations, and transfers, Mr. Farnsworth.
We would ask that you would approve the recommendations, and happy to entertain any questions.
I move to approve the classified employment actions as presented.
I'll second.
I have a motion to second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Item 6.2, I want to point out that there is a gentleman, Aaron Rodriguez, I believe it is, who accepted a position with us and then has since, since we've made the agenda, has since resigned that position. So I'll entertain a motion minus Aaron Rodriguez, please.
I move to approve as presented and as clarified by Mr. Larson. I'll second.
I have a motion to second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion passes. 6.4, certified personnel and employment.
It's pretty straightforward. If you look into the executive content, there's a teacher that resigned, unfortunately, and then we... And then we've been informed that they took a job in a nearby school district while they have not been officially released from their contract with Sholo Unified School District. There's not much we can do about that, since they're no longer an employee. But I just wanted you to have the facts regarding that employee. And that's deeply frowned upon.
So, if we don't accept her resignation, is she still an employee?
She would still be an employee.
Wouldn't that be fun to ride?
That would be an interesting phone call to the other superintendent to explain.
Wouldn't it? You want to make that phone call?
I don't.
Just curious. Okay. All right, just asking questions.
I actually believe that that could be conveyed to the State Department.
It absolutely can.
It's not ethical, for sure.
I move to approve the certified employment actions as presented. I'll second.
Motion, second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. 6.5 Coaches and Athletics Stipends, 25-26. Dr. Farnsworth?
I think we're in 6.4.
Oh, I'm sorry. I marked the wrong one off. I apologize. 6.4 Certified Personnel Employment.
I would ask that you would take the recommendation for these hirings and extra-duty stipends.
I move to approve all the certified employee changes as presented by the administration.
Second.
Motion, second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion passes. Now, we're at 6.5. Dr. Farnsworth?
We were just presenting the athletic stipends with the coaching suggestions and asked that you would approve those.
I move to approve the changes for the coaches and athletic stipends for fiscal year 25-26 as presented.
I have a motion, second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? I'm opposed as presented. 6.6 Second Review of Model Policies and Procedures. Dr. Farnsworth?
So, this is our second reading of these three policies. And I would ask that the board, if you're good with the changes that are highlighted in the policies, that we adopt these. And then I would send us off to the trust to make it formalized with the corrected changes that we're proposing.
I move to approve the model policies and procedures, 5-217A, 5-217B as presented. I'll second.
I have a motion, second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Item 6.7 Legacy Learning MOU.
So, we entered this MOU last year. And so we're asking the board to renew this MOU. And the information that I've been given, we actually have one student that is being serviced, which is services that we are not able to provide due to the technical nature. And so we would ask that you would approve this MOU so that we could continue servicing this student at Legacy Learning.
I move to approve the Legacy Learning MOU as presented.
Second.
I have a motion, second. Dr. Farnsworth, will you tell us what MOU means?
It stands for memorandum of understanding. It's a... yeah.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. 6.8 Audit Engagement Services with DRS CPA. Ms. Davis?
This is our audit firm, who does our audit. This is the third year of a three-year contract with DRS CPA firm. So, this is for the fiscal year 24-25 audit. And like I said, this is year three of a three-year contract. After this year, we will be going out to bid for audit services for next years.
Are we happy with the work they've done so far?
Yes.
I move to approve DRS CPA P L L C as the auditors for the fiscal year 24-25 auditors.
Second.
Motion, second. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. 6.9 Sholo High School Studio Art Club. Ms. Davis?
This is a new club that they're asking to have at the high school, the Sholo High School Studio Art Club, which they'll go by S L H S SAC is a short. This is with Mr. Kittle. So, it's a great club that we think will be a great addition to the high school. So, we ask that you approve this new club.
I'll make a motion to approve the new Sholo High School Student Club, Studio Art Club.
I second. I second.
I have a motion, second. I don't know if everybody saw the list of the kids that have already signed up. But it was a lot.
It's cool.
Yeah, really awesome. I'm excited about that one. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. 6.10 Food Service Bad Debt Write-Off. Ms. Davis?
If you remember, I've talked to you in the last couple meetings that we had an audit with ADE for food service. And part of that corrective action with the audit was that we have to do a bad debt write-off every year for seniors and for those students that are no longer students of Sholo. And so this is, and the board has to approve those bad debts. So, the first one is for the seniors, which is $605.55. And that is for fiscal year '24 and '25. So, that was the bad debt, which is not bad, $605. The second list is for the inactive students. Again, that's through '24 and '25, which is $4,039.40. We do now have a new, with our new director, she's put in a new program that she is now sending out letters once a week to parents. So, hopefully, that bad debt will be a lot less at the end of every year. And that does have to be paid, that cannot be paid out of food service, nor can it be paid out of MNO. So, it has to come from one of our other cash accounts. So, we usually take it out of our community service fund, which unfortunately, a lot of that money comes from either facility rentals or unfortunately, part of the athletic camp fees.
I would like to point out, it's very hard to capture food service debt because it's not the kids' fault, right? But I do want to thank our business office or our food service office. There was a full-page ad, I don't know if you saw it in the latest newspaper publication, saying Sholo Public Schools, food service, free and reduced lunch. It was an entire full page outlining to parents how they could go and apply for free or reduced meals, how to navigate the application process, what are the minimum requirements in terms of your annual income. So, I was super impressed to see that full-page newspaper ad trying to reach all of our community to try to get those numbers.
That also was part of our audit corrective action because we have not been doing that, as far as I understand. And so that was something we did. And we ran that, we're running that for a whole month.
It was a whole page.
Yeah.
Awesome. Can we do something like on our Facebook and social media accounts to where somebody could open that up anytime during the year? Like, you know, say, parents come in, move into the area, maybe don't know, you know, how to go about seeking out those services? So, that way, we can make sure we're reaching everybody throughout the year, you know? And I would love to see that made available. And, you know, and then every once in a while, maybe even share it on Facebook. Because I try to be, you know, cognizant and share everything I can that we put on and stuff. So, maybe if we could do it a few times during the year, that would probably be helpful for the move-ins.
Absolutely.
Because I never want to see our kids not being fed, you know? So, I move to approve the bad debt and take care of it and move forward with it.
I'll second.
Motion, second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. 6.11 Lead Counselor Stipend.
So, last year, the governing board approved the lead counselor stipend as part of the general stipends. But I neglected to put that on when we approved the general stipends this year. So, this is just ratifying that, adding that to the general stipend list for this year. And then it will be on every year after that.
I move to approve the amended general stipend list for fiscal year '25-26 to include the high school lead counselor stipend as presented.
Second.
Motion, second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. 6.12 Soul Source Vendor. Ms. Davis?
So, as you know, the governing board has to approve all Soul Source vendors. This is a Soul Source vendor that we have for our WMI school. And we used her last year. This is paid out of a grant. So, this is not coming out of MNO. But this is a Soul Source. She is the only one that provides this consulting service to WMI. So, we ask the board to approve this Soul Source vendor.
I move to approve Soul Source vendors as submitted.
Second.
Motion, second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. 6.13 School Properties Disclosure. Ms. Davis?
All right, so every month, we bring these to you. The schools are going through stuff and starting to clean out a lot of stuff. So, the high school, we had some keyboards. The grounds had a top dresser. Not exactly sure what that is, but I think it's part of a mowing machine, a mower. The Whipple Ranch, we had a pizza oven in the kitchen. And in transportation, these are some bigger items. We have the old Cougar bus. It's being retired.
Green one.
So, yep, the big green one. So, that's going up for auction. And then we have three vehicles, a truck and a truck and a car, I think.
Couple trucks.
Couple trucks, that's right. So, all this stuff will be going up for auction.
I spent many a long night in that Cougar bus.
Did you? How old is that thing? Gosh.
Mike Seaman.
2009? Is that what it is? Yeah, it's a 2009, so. 2009? Oh, my goodness. A great antique for someone. Wow. Crazy.
2009 is not qualified as an antique.
For a Cougar bus? That's an antique.
We should keep it, park it out front, and use it for advertising.
If it doesn't sell, that might be a good idea.
No, it'll sell.
I move to approve the list as presented.
Second.
Motion, second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. 6.14 Transportation Bus Pass Replacement Card. Dr. Farnsworth?
So, as I said in my report, the Transportation Department has initiated a brand-new program. We've given ID badges for every kid. And we already know, kids have already lost theirs, and we've replaced them. So, that's unsustainable. So, we're asking the board, moving forward, that if a kid, student loses their bus pass, we're still going to let them on the bus, even if they don't have a bus pass. But we would ask that the board approve a nominal fee of $5 to replace it. This is in line with what we're doing at the junior high for their student ID badges. If they lose their ID badge at the junior high, we're asking for a $5 replacement. So, we feel that's reasonable. It's in line with what we're already doing. So, I would ask the board to approve that moving forward.
I'll make a motion, then, to approve the $5 replacement fee for the transportation passes as presented.
I'll second.
Motion, second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. 6.15 Student Fundraising Activity. Dr. Farnsworth?
I really want to thank the junior high student council. They're on the ball. They've submitted 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7 different fundraisers. So, movie nights with concessions, September 1st through the whole year. Boot grams for Halloween. Halloween dance, gobblegram. I guess we love the grams a lot. Gobblegram for Thanksgiving. Holiday dance in December. Crush for your crush February 2nd through February 12th. And then a Valentine's Day dance. I would ask that the board approve those fundraising activities.
I move to approve all fundraising activities as presented. I'll second.
Motion, second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Item 6.16 Gifts and Donations.
Again, we've got great business partners in this community and just want to thank Safeway, Step Propane, Catlman's for their donations to the CTE culinary program. We also have Matt and Chris Jones donating some barbecue grills. So, that's for the facilities and warehouse department. So, I think those are going to be well-used. And just want to thank all of our business partners for donating.
Absolutely.
I move to approve the donations with a big thank you as presented.
Second.
I have a motion, second. With gratitude, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. 6.17 Consider Regular October... I knew there was something about October in this. Consider Regular October Board Meeting Date.
So, per usual, the October meeting date is over fall break. If it's appropriate with the board, we'd recommend either doing it the week before or the week after.
I do not know how I'm not turning it off. I thought I turned it off. Sorry. I apologize. It's a new phone. I don't get it yet.
It may be important.
It's too smart for me. Sorry. Okay. Go ahead. I'm sorry.
So, for me...
Yes, sir.
October 2nd might be difficult. I'm in the valley for training all day. I'm guessing it's going to go until 5 or 6, which would not allow me to get back, which is fine if y'all want to do it that day. Without me, that works, too.
Does the rest of the board have a preference, either the 2nd or the 16th?
The first week's better for me, but I can call in if you need me to.
Okay, so the first, so you're saying the 2nd works best for you? What about you, Kelly?
Well, the 2nd works best for me, because I'm flying out on the 5th, and I'll be gone for a week, so, yeah.
The 2nd. Paul, how do you feel about the 2nd?
I'm hunting somewhere then. The 2nd might be the best.
Okay. Do I hear that the 2nd is what we'd like to go towards?
Or I could call in on the 16th, if you would like me to do that, so.
Whatever the board would like to do.
I'd call in.
No, let's just do the 2nd. And then I'll, if I can call in, I'll call in. If I can't, I can't. Paul, you'll be in charge.
If I'm not hunting.
On the 2nd, if you're not hunting. He may be hunting the 2nd.
I know I'm hunting the 16th.
Okay.
Okay.
Okay, we will shoot for October the 2nd.
October 2nd.
Thank you.
Courtney, make sure you remind me.
Yes, sir. You need a motion.
Yeah. I move to approve the change of our regular October meeting date from October 9 to October 2.
All second.
I have a motion, second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion passes. 6.18, Consider Regular Board Meeting Dates for 2526, school year. These are all the 2nd Thursday, right? We'll change as needed, right?
Yep.
March and October usually.
They look great. Are we moving on it? Okay, I move to approve as presented. One second.
Motion, second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion passes. 6.19, Future Agenda Items. Anybody have anything they need for the future?
No.
Nope.
Just thought, it's on there.
And no action there.
May I interject for a moment?
Please do.
We would like to maybe consider a work session. There's about three or four different topics that I think the board would like to talk about. Would you guys like to schedule that now, or do you want to wait till we get?
Let's do it now.
Okay.
You okay doing it now, John?
Not this month. It's like towards the end of September, early October, if that works.
We could do end of September.
We'd be hunting.
Are you hunting in September?
Yes.
Yes.
I'll be gone the last four days of the month, for sure.
How about the week of the 22nd? How does that week look?
September.
September.
So 22 to 26.
Yeah.
I can't do the night of the 26th. I have a date with my wife, Spindel, and I'm not, um...
Yeah, it's painting, right?
Yeah, and I'm not.
Yeah, don't miss that.
Nope.
Right.
Nope.
Yeah, right.
She would rather die.
Take her on a date, John. Let's do it any other night, other than the 26th.
We can do any of those nights, and of course, we'll do dinner. I'll make sure, and we'll start earlier.
Any of those work for me? 22, 23, 24, 25, any of those work?
How does the 23rd sound?
23rd to Tuesday?
That would give us Monday to kind of prep, make sure we got everything ready to go, post it properly, and then we can have a Tuesday night, the 23rd.
Paul, does Tuesdays usually work well for you with your hunting?
It should be done.
It should be done? Okay. So let's, yeah, the 23rd?
Okay, do you want to pick a time?
Um, earlier?
5:30, 5?
5:30.
5:30 start time? Okay. So 5:30 on the 23rd.
That's great.
And we'll hold it at the district office, correct?
Yes, sir.
Perfect, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for working on that.
All right.
Okay, none of that, we don't have any, any call of public, right? Okay, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.